Yay. All right, and now we will move on to P three, which is bill nine eight nine C S city camping ordinance. And for this one, we are going to have our city attorney, Robert Black do the presentation.
First things first, I have to get off of mute. Thank you, Mayor. As the council is aware, the city has been involved in litigation stemming from the Palco Marsh abatement and or at least arising out of that action and at that time, litigation has kind of dragged on relatively inactive. But one step in the direction of resolving that litigation and putting it behind the city of Eureka is to revise our camping ordinance to bring it into compliance with the current state of federal law. I think all of you are aware of the Martin versus Boise case, which came out in the fall of nineteen, excuse me, the fall of two thousand eighteen. And you know, basically said that houseless people, homeless people cannot by virtue of their status be criminalized through a total prohibition of camping in public spaces. We now have an ordinance that essentially contains such a total prohibition. This is an attempt to try to establish a set of values on the use of public property. But at the same time, permit large areas of public space within the city limits of the city of Eureka to be available to people for whom there is no available shelter space. And that shelter space is not not unavailable in just a broad generic sense, but unavailable to the specific individual or individuals that are in need of that shelter space. So in other words, if they have a specific set of circumstances, a specific disability, a specific relationship that would prohibit them from being admitted to a shelter, that shelter is not available to them. And therefore, they are individuals who need to find a place to sleep and to camp temporarily on public property. This ordinance does prohibit camping during certain hours of the day stated to be fifteen minutes after sunrise up to fifteen minutes prior to sunset. That's in recognition of the logistics of setting up and taking down a camp camping facility. It also prohibits camping in city parks. Obviously, during the dark, the dark hours where camping is otherwise permitted under the ordinance. It prohibits camping along the city's recreational trails at the zoo, at the golf course, and in certain neighborhoods that are largely that are specifically named and defined in parts of the Eureka municipal code. And they're pretty limited, but they consist of some of the city's prime commercial districts for the most part. The ordinance, unlike I think many ordinances that you see where there's the adoption of certain technical adjustments, for example, to allow the Betty Chin facility that in the ordinance you just adopted. You adopted some kind of technical adjustments to zoning and that sort of thing. This is an ordinance that calls for the application of judgment as to what's reasonable and what does accommodate individuals who are not totally in control of their condition as far as needing and seeking a place to sleep and lie. So in that sense, it's an ordinance in which everybody's opinion is valid. But it will be up to you, the council, to make certain determinations. Number one, do you want to have any restrictions? You could eliminate every restriction on camping on public property. And you know, that's, that's certainly a political possibility that doesn't, political possibilities aren't always politically popular. But you know, that would be the, on one end of the spectrum, you could do that. On the other end of the spectrum, I think an area where you can't go is to make the ordinance so restrictive that it is in effect another version, or in different words, a complete prohibition on camping in public spaces, such as was outlawed in the Boise case. I will mention that the ordinance does something in addition to regulating camping in public spaces, and that is to regulate camping on private property as well. And that was also true of the existing ordinance. The, the constitutional rights relative to camping on private property, unless you have permission of the owner is an entirely different ballpark and much less, I think, complicated. And so this does provide some new language for the enforcement of camping restrictions on private property. The, if you want, I could share the screen with the proposed motion, but that might make sense for later in the, later in the discussion. And I'm prepared to answer questions if you have them.
All right, do we have any questions for city attorney Black? All right, Councilmember Allison.
Yeah, so currently there is no ordinance for camping, though there used to be one, is that correct?
No, there's still, that ordinance still exists. It kind of comes under the heading of a blue, what they used to call blue laws. Or maybe still, we still do call them blue laws. Ordinances that were adopted a long time ago that today have no force or effect because the law or history itself has moved on.
Got it.
And it's there, and this would repeal that and take it off the books.
Got it, and this, this, you know, talking about like, like locations on a map, obviously, it's not citywide. It's just certain parts of the city.
That is correct. Certain parts of the city where there's a blanket prohibition. And let me just say, these, the concepts that are presented here don't necessarily have the kind of legal validation that we might like if we wanted to be completely and one hundred percent comfortable. But the concept of restricted zones comes out of the settlement between homeless advocates and the county of Orange. And I believe certain cities in the county of Orange also joined with this. And the, in that case, it was a federal lawsuit which was settled globally and the the settlement agreement includes certain restricted zones where there's no camp, no camping at any time. And to state probably one of the more obvious ones, we would, I think, one of the zones that they prohibited in Orange County was the airport, which is kind of a, I would assume a relatively non-controversial restriction. And what we've tried to do here is apply that concept to certain values similar to the airport, for example, the golf course or the zoo. But also extended a bit into the protection of certain commercial zones where the operation of privately owned businesses might be impaired or inhibited by people camping on sidewalks or parklets, you know, that sort of thing in a business district.
Right, and are ordinances like these typically seen as common, whether it be statewide, nationwide, or even worldwide?
Well, I I'd like to say yes, I, I think that the desire to have ordinances like this is very common and extends to most cities and counties. I think cities have struggled as we struggled a bit to come up with the proper measure and application and reasonableness of regulation. That's why this, this has been quite a while in development. I mean, obviously, a lot of other things have taken place during this two-year period, but I think that that one can find different examples, and there are cities that have adopted replacement ordinances. But a lot of them are still struggling with how to do, how, how to do the job.
Will ordinances like this put houseless people in jail? Will this, you know, take people off the streets? That's a, that's a question or implied concern from people I've got.
Yes, I've heard that, and for all practical purposes, the answer is no. Is there a theoretical legal construct where this could be enforced as a misdemeanor violation of the law, which does carry a jail penalty and does carry a significant financial penalty? I think that that has never happened in practice that I know of here, and it's certainly not for multiple years now. We, you know, Sergeant LaFrance, who's in the field, might be able to offer some explanation. Captain Stevens, who's, I think, on this call might be able to speak to the department's enforcement philosophy at this point. But I think the city, for example, just to give you an example, the, I think the ordinance really provides a basis for conversation, human scale, human oriented conversation to occur in the field, possibly between enforcement personnel and somebody who is camping. But to try to connect that individual, number one, with shelter. Number two, if not available, other services. Number three, potentially, say, a, a repeat or defiant violator with diversion services or other city services. I think this is, it's basically a tool for conversation and rarely, I would say very rarely enforcement.
Thank you.
Direct enforcement.
Thank you. One last question from me. Perhaps maybe Captain Stevens could maybe speak about this. Could, could you present a hypothetical situation? Say someone pitched a tent in Clark Plaza at seven o'clock at night. How would EPD respond to, to something like this with the new ordinance?
That is one of the restricted areas listed in the, the ordinance, the downtown business district. Again, a lot of the enforcement we do is complaint based. We don't necessarily go out looking for violations of any ordinance in particular. And we would use the ordinance as a tool for us to actually address those issues, probably more or less based on a complaint. We would probably contact that individual, much like we do now. And as the city attorney mentioned, services is our primary goal is to contact people, hook them up with the appropriate services and try to get them off the streets. That's the ultimate goal is to get people off the streets. And this would be a tool for us to actually have the authority to contact those individuals, make those connections, and then use our resources to try to get them off the street. We do run into many individuals who are just refusal of all services and don't want to accept the assistance that we try to provide, the city tries to provide, and that our other service providers provide to them. And this will give us a better enforcement tool if it comes to that, to actually try to address those issues.
Thanks a lot, Captain Stevens. That's all my questions.
All right, so Councilmember Castellano and then Councilmember Arroyo had questions.
Thank you. Let's see, I have a few questions. I guess the first is just kind of regarding the, the specific situation we're in now and, and that we're in the midst of a pandemic. And there are concerns about people in shelters. Can, can you speak to how that? Like, would, would that be considered involuntary camping if someone was concerned and didn't want to go to a shelter because they had concerns about health reasons for the, because of the pandemic?
Yeah, so I think, I think that's actually a good example of a conversation, an interactive process that might occur in the field because if somebody is camping openly in a public area, and yet there's a shelter space available, then I think the question becomes, is that person in the, is that person who's camping and doesn't want to avail themselves of a shelter space because of COVID concerns? That space is not really available to them if those concerns are genuine or deeply felt. And, you know, I think that, I think that our officers in the field, I think their approach to enforcement of the ordinance is going to be one that is, and I, I think this is the directive, you know, from the management of the police department. I think their, their approach is going to be one of really dialoguing with that person, seeing if there is an available alternative. Is there a better place, a safer place to camp? If they, if they really feel they can't go into the shelter? I mean, those are the kinds of, those are the kinds of interactions that I anticipate happening out there. And not a mechanical enforcement of an ordinance that says, well, the ordinance doesn't say anything about COVID, and you've got a space available, so we're going to write you up. I don't see that happening.
I, I, and so kind of a, a follow-up question, I'm just going to press this issue because I, you know, and I'll get to maybe some thoughts later, but I guess like, what if, and maybe this is a click, connect, a question for Captain Stevens, but what if, you know, someone who's camping expresses that they don't want to go to the shelter because they have these heartfelt, you know, or deeply felt concerns, but someone who's in an enforcement position sees otherwise, or, you know, or thinks that they should avail themselves of a shelter?
Captain Stevens, oh, good.
Yeah, so it's like the city attorney said, we understand those considerations. COVID has really affected our CSAT team, how we've had to operate within the homeless community and with the other resources we have. You know, we talked about the fifteen minutes prior to and the fifteen minutes after sunrise. As long as someone would, you know, be willing to adhere to those pieces of the ordinance, there are allowances that could be made. We understand that not everybody wants to be in a shelter. There are concerns for people's health, and putting people together at this time is probably not the best bet, especially as we have changed tiers now. And I know some of the resources are going to put back in more restrictive processes to take people in. And we've been considerate of that the entire time. So again, it's, it's finding that balance between the enforcement and the willingness of those we encounter on the street to work with us, work within the law the best they can, and not create that public hazard, that public safety issue, and being willing to just get up and leave when it's time to go. And that's the, that's the short of it. We really can't have people ingraining themselves or embedding themselves in the camps that become nuisanceous for our, our community. And so if they, you know, set their tent up, they're gone when they're supposed to be gone, then that's an accommodation that definitely would be considered by the enforcement team or by the CSAT team that's out there actually encountering the individuals.
City manager Slattery, did you want to speak to that?
Please, I just want to add to that. You know, whether it's a, an opinion or not, in the way that the shelters are being run right now, it's going to be very clear that, you know, whether it's a rescue mission, the vetting, or those types of things, they have strict guidelines. You can be admitted, it's not one of those. So technically, if that was the case, the likelihood of them having to be available to that shelter is, is not likely. And with the shelter app that we have, we plan on implementing, that space wouldn't be made available because, you know, there's strict guidelines in, in taking in participants in shelters right now. And so it's not something that's only on the, the community member experiencing homelessness or the opinion of EPD. I would say that those shelters have guidelines that wouldn't allow for those people to, you know, be randomly admitting during, during the time with the pandemic.
Thank you, and then maybe a somewhat related question. So if, if someone was saying, let's say, camping and they weren't in an area, they, let's say they were in, according to this ordinance, like Old Town, like at the, let's say they're at the gazebo. And someone came and said, you can't camp here, and they were like, where do I go? I mean, we're, we're not outlining that in this ordinance. So they basically just be, would they be shown a map of where they can't go? And kind of been like figured out? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand like how, how this is going to work, you know? Is that how it would work?
And, you know, I totally appreciate that you're trying to understand that. And there are, there are possibly some blanks to be filled in. But those end up getting worked out in practice in the field. And I think the, you know, certainly the current philosophy in, at the EPD is not to err on the side of rigidity or heavy-handed enforcement, but more, as I said, to look to this interactive process and trying to, trying to bring people to services or bring services to the people. I think if somebody you know, is in a, in a place that is clearly defined by the ordinance as a restricted zone, and people are prohibited from camping there, the first thing to happen is ascertain that that person knows, you know, what the law is and why they can't camp there. The second thing is there's been a reluctance, and it's one that I, I kind of agree with, but it does come up from time to time. There's been a reluctance to say here's where you can camp. And I think the reason for that is because it will, you know, it's going to create a kind of a concentrated zone or a constant zone in which camping will take place regularly and, and constantly. And that's, you know, that's that's a point of discussion, but there has been a reluctance to say, oh, well, you can't camp here, but you can camp there. Effectively, we're leaving a very substantial part of the city available to people who want to explore where they should go or where they can go or where they feel comfortable. So, but again, that's a point of discussion.
Thank you, and then I guess, what, the things you said brought me to another question, and then I have another question, and I'll stop. I'm just curious, because a couple of times, there's been mention of an interactive process. And I'm curious if that is inherent in the ordinance, if it, are things, could things, something like that be written into an ordinance? Is that a thing? Do people, like, do, you know, I mean, if we're kind of saying that, like, part of the the part of this implies or necessitates interaction, would that be something that, do people, how, does that work in an ordinance? I'm just, this is just a question, I don't know.
That's a very good question. I, I think, I think it's possible, I think it would be a project unto itself. But, but I suspect it could be done. It's, it's not common, let's put it that way. I think the, the reason that I feel comfortable speaking publicly on the record, so to speak, about the attitudes and approach and philosophy is because it exists in practice in the field on a daily basis. And again, I think Sergeant LaFrance is probably the one person who's really out there as the, you know, the head of that ongoing project in the field. And you know, I think it's, it's, it's created by a whole variety, a whole complex of policies. And when the city council votes to support a program, you know, like a diversion program, all of those things tend to create a kind of a quasi-legal dictate that this is how the city, this is how EPD is going to do business. And that works itself out in reality out there. I mean, that's, that is the reality. I don't see, I see the citations come through my office. And we know, for example, that there hasn't been a citation for camping since September, or maybe prior to September two thousand eighteen. But I see some citations for, you know, open containers and smoking in prohibited locations and those kinds of things. And there's just nothing about the EPD approach that's heavy-handed. And yeah, I'll just leave it at that. It's, it's, it's real.
Last, last question. I was just hoping, there's, I have gotten a lot of questions about criminalization. And I'm just hoping someone could speak to the diversion program or programs that exist.
I can take that one on, Bob, if that's okay with you.
Please, please.
So we had discussions with council a while back about a diversion program and, and implementing a diversion program. EPD and Uplift have been in contact with the DA on the development of that. And it's actually up and running now in a, in a pilot project. I think it's demonstrative of how this is going to be a tool and how it can be used to help provide services and contacts and warm handoffs to programs that can help some of these community members so that they can benefit from those services. On top of that, you know, we're also still in the beginning stages of the alternative response team, which came up in discussions a few months ago about different ways of responding to these issues. Initially, it was to be discussed relative to mental health issues and having our homeless outreach worker and a, a mental clinician to go out and respond to these things. This is another tool that we can use for these things when dispatch comes out. And if there's a report of camping during certain hours or inappropriate locations, we can use that alternative response team to go out there and provide those services so that we don't have, you know, presence of an armed officer doing that. But the diversion program's up and running. We've had a pilot with an individual that, I believe, was graffitiing and Sergeant LaFrance can speak to that, but it's up and running. We plan on further developing it further and, and using it as another one of the tools that we can use. And just to go back on your interactive process and those type of things. And it would be great, Sergeant LaFrance, if you could talk to this, but it's not just relative to camping. I think that whether it's open containers, whether it's drug use, whether it's, you know, inappropriate activities that technically are violation of our municipal code, there's an interactive process with all of those. And if there's a, an ability and a willingness to, to comply and, 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 you know, either take services or stop doing what they're doing. I don't think the intention is, in any of those cases, is to, to, to give them a citation. It's trying to aim compliance and try and stop some of the issues that come from, whether it's an open container, drug use, or, or camping. But the diversion program is definitely a perfect vehicle for some of these to avoid them getting in. them getting into the system, being ticketed, um having fines, those type of things. And, you know, depending on where they're at, this community member could be somebody who doesn't have an ID or somebody who doesn't have a social security card. And that's one of the milestones within the uplift program. They can be assigned to the uplift program. If they go and get that ID or if they go get that social security card, then whatever the violation is goes away. So um that's something that we see is um helping out. We're not here to um make this a criminal issue. We're trying to help these community members and, and get them to the programs and services that'll help them better their lives.
Sergeant LaFrance, did you want to respond to that at all as well?
Yeah, I can jump. And this is, you know, one for us, uh, we say a one-size-fits-all approach does not work. We know that. We need every kind of approach possible on the table three sixty. Uh, so we, we look at accountability measures, which uh this ordinance would be. We also compassion and outreach measures, uh, which we also use. Uh, so really want everything on the table. And uh, every single contact we have with individuals is a chance to address unwanted behavior, uh, which is impacting the community negatively uh in various ways. Uh, but it's also a chance for us to interact with folks and get them uh working towards long-term solutions and addressing those underlying causes of why they're on the streets. So for us, just really one more tool uh in the tool belt for us, um, when especially the, the major croc uh individuals that are having major problems repeatedly that are causing a significant impact uh throughout the city or in certain areas. It's just one more thing to, to work um towards, especially when they're not accepting resources. Uh, we have, you know, definitely some individuals who are very resistant to resources. Uh, they don't want to comply with any rules at all. Uh, they make a giant mess where they go. Uh, they leave a lot of trash behind. Uh, they leave other items behind that are unacceptable uh to be in a public area. And so it's, it's a, it's a, this is one more to, tool to help uh push that issue forward uh through enforcement. And we often forget that, or we often forget that enforcement also leads towards outreach efforts as well. I can't tell, tell you how many times we've arrested people, they've gone to jail and they've also, uh, that were either involved in heavy drug use or dealing drugs. And the fact they went to jail was a, a, a moment for them to, uh, an aha moment to kind of uh open their eyes and see what's going on in their life. So uh enforcement uh does turn into outreach.
All right. So I, I agree, Dan Leslie, if we could uh turn it over to Councilmember Arroyo.
I had some similar questions. So I think mine, my questions were around why, why not say these are the okay areas for limited nighttime only use rather than these are the not okay areas? Um, but I think that um City Attorney Black has answered that pretty well, although if there are any other thoughts um that you have on, you know, why, why not do the reverse? Is what um some community members have asked of me. Um, so I brought that um question or, you know, thought I would bring it up here. Um, uh, but before I lose track of it, um, I've been having a hard time formulating this question well. But I think I'll, I'll leave it open-ended and ask. So when I see problematic overnight sleeping, it's usually, when I encounter it, it's usually in the doorways of private properties where it's impeding people's access. Or, you know, immediately adjacent to a trail. Um, and really the impact I see is like off-leash dogs. Um, and so those are the, in my like direct experience in Eureka, those are the things that I see and experience where I'm like, well, I can see why that would be problematic. But since I don't do response to complaint, complaints with regard to other forms of camping, I was wondering if EPD folks could speak to a little bit more to like, why, why do you need this versus the other options that you um have in your tool belt? Like, why is this ordinance needed at this time? We know why it's needed to address our um, our legal issue where we have an ordinance on the books that's no longer valid and we need to replace it. But um could EPD speak a little bit more to why, why this tool is needed now?
So there are many individuals that are camping right now in the city that are a part of the criminal element. So we've offered them services. We made contact with them. Uh, just today, Pop was working several Green Bay areas and around the city, ran across three felony warrant suspects. Uh, there were one for probation violation, PRCS violations and for burglary. Um, so there is a portion of the population that is using camping as a way to avoid contact with law enforcement, uh, to avoid being responsible and accountable for their actions and, and reporting like they're supposed to. But yeah, we can make the arrest when the jail opens up and we can actually do things outside of COVID. But still, we have the issue of the camping and the impacts it's having in those greenbelt areas. So having the ability within that Martin versus Boise decision to actually address the camping with these individuals, uh, that's going to be an important tool in many different areas of the city. In the same way, I think it is with, and I agree, the, the problematic areas you see sometimes are private property, which the ordinance covers and, and the law covers. You can't camp on somebody's private property without uh the appropriate uh permission from the owner. But there are a lot of other issues that are down there and especially in the Old Town area that creates issues for us. And having the ability to enforce when it's all other options that are off the table and actually have them move their stuff and legally have that standing behind us to do it is what's going to be needed sometimes to actually make a positive impact for those business owners and for the community as a whole. And open up those public spaces so that it can be used by our entire community and not just those that want to or need to camp and just don't want to live by, by the law.
Thank you. Um, and I, I understand that some Sergeant LaFrance gave some, um, some input on the on the trail proximity. And I was wondering if um he or, or you Captain Stevens could speak to, to that, why that um sort of desire for a large distance from trails.
Yeah, so a lot of that was based on uh, we want the public to be able to use the trails. And we've had some encampments next to the trails that have been pretty impactful. Uh, garbage coming in and out of it, uh, foot traffic non-stop. Uh, we've had some assaults. We actually had an assault uh just yesterday. We dealt with uh just south on a pound road. Uh, yeah, just south of the pound road. So that's primarily the reason why. Um, but there's, there are some fishing game codes that are available also uh for some environmental impact. But again, we kind of want to keep that area clear for the entire public to enjoy and to appreciate and also to reduce any kind of environmental impacts.
Thank you. And City Attorney Black, did you have any other thoughts on the the framing of you shall not versus here's where you, you could?
I actually have a question on that too. So while you're thinking about that, um, I've been wondering if we do say um, this is where you can go, does that somehow make it, you know, city sanctioned and then like a sequoia? Like we need to be able to say it's okay if we officially say something is sanctioned as a campsite area? I, I was just, yeah.
Yes, I think actually the way that, the way that you put that is um illustrative of one of the problems. I think that if you, um, I think you might have a sequoia issue. And of course, that requires a lot of city resources. It may also end up creating an obligation on the part of the city to provide facilities and services. And that, you know, if providing facilities and services such as garbage collection, you know, sanitation facilities, running water, showers, you know, I don't know what the options are. Some might be saying, well, yeah, that would, sounds good. That would be a good thing. Um, but that's a that's not really a legal question or an ordinance type question. It's much larger and kind of goes to an allocation of city resources, the development of a city program, the assignment of personnel to make those things happen. So it becomes a, it becomes a pretty large digression from the way that we've approached housing issues in the city. And uh would be, I think, a, a real shift of direction. And I know, I know that the people who were involved in the Palco Marsh cleanup are some of those who are the most resistant to naming, you know, places where it's sanctioned to camp. And by that, I'm referring to some of our law enforcement folks. Yeah, so it's, I think it's, it's a big question. It's a complex question, potentially expensive in terms of city money and city resources.
Cast, Councilmember Castellano.
Sorry, just, this is a quick follow-up question. Doesn't the emergency shelter declaration um give some space for the city around things like sequoia in terms of uh identifying a place to camp? I mean, uh, again, not saying right or wrong, but just at this moment, uh, I think there, I'm just wondering if there's some space around those concerns due to the emergency shelter declaration.
I think that's a good point. I think that's a good point. It, it might. I'm not, I'd be kind of coming off the top of my head just to opine about that, but uh I think that's a really, that's a good point to look into.
Councilmember Mezner.
Um, just a follow-up question on that. Um, emergency shelter, those are generally short-term with a timeline. So I'm not, I think that might be aside from, you know, I'm wondering if that's like from this because um if we're going to put something that's specific about camping, it might go maybe hand in hand, but it wouldn't be a long term. Isn't the, isn't the um emergency shelter ordinances when we put them in place shorter term? They're not permanent. Is that correct?
I believe so.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Bergau.
Oh, see, so I just have a couple of questions. I think we've had a lot of really good questions. And I also would say um that it's really important to learn from our past and we've experienced this with Palco Marsh. I was involved in that, as was Council, Councilmember Arroyo. And if you remember what a nightmare that was telling people where they could be and how that ended up happening, it was awful. But that's not my question. That was my my um comment on that, which I shouldn't have done. But I was just curious. So part of um the things that I'm reading in the emails about criminalization is that, um, and what I'm hearing is that people feel like that this is just another way to criminalize homelessness. And what I would like to ask, um, and I'm not sure, maybe maybe City Manager Slattery could answer this, or perhaps Sergeant LaFrance. What kinds of programs has the city of Eureka already come up with to support our homeless population? That, 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 that kind of speaks to the intention of what this ordinance may be looking at. I mean, we have uplift Eureka, we have the diversion program. Uh, can you talk?
Yeah, so um, I mean, there's been a lot ever since the inception of CATE about five years ago. We started off with uh disadvantaged youth and moved on to take care of disadvantaged community members, both adult and youth and families. And building those relationships and, and developing programs based off of trial and error. I would say that um, you know, from that, you know, developing uplift, which is not only, it's, it's a multifaceted program. It, it develops milestones where um community members experiencing homelessness get, get put together with a um, with a co-pilot that, you know, takes them through whatever stages they need to go to. Um, they, it also includes a job skills training program that takes uh up to fifteen people out on cruise um to learn job skills and do work around the city, whether it's painting, little removal, some landscaping, those type of things throughout the city. And that's been going on for about two years. Um, the program also includes milestones where um they have an app that tracks what, what milestones they need to get to. And once they get to the certain milestones, they may be eligible for the job skills training program. Once the job skills training program, they get through that program, they become a part of our pathway to payday. Pathway to payday puts them in front of a bunch of businesses, up to fifteen businesses, as well as the city of Eureka as an employer, um, trying to get them jobs. As a matter of fact, the last um pathway to payday we did last month was fifteen participants. It had to be limited because of COVID, but all fifteen of those were offered jobs. All of them were community members experiencing homelessness at the time. On top of that, um, we've partnered with CSAT, the Community Safety Enhancement Team, that's been engagement team that's been um developed by EPD. Um, they have a whole staff that are specifically designated to address our open spaces and trails and parks. And they are dealing with these community members for the most part. And just last year, they've done well over seventy warm handoffs to um services um for um these community members. It's been a huge change. This is not the typical municipal operation for addressing these things. It's typically done at the county level. And, you know, we've become great partners with the county and they've um made us uh available to a lot of different resources to help support these programs. All of them are done through um grant writing team that get grant funding to um perform all of these programs and provide all these services. It's been extensive. And then we've moved on to housing now. We've housed over fifty people as a part of the F program over the past year and a half. And we have well over two hundred thousand in housing assistance funds um and are continuing to house people. And um we provide stipends for the job skills training program to help people out and get them used finances. We provide a rent-ready program that allows them to understand, um, you know, how to get into a rental and, and live on their own. And then we also provide financial um services for them. And then once we get them into housing, it's not just like we're done with them. We have a housing assistant, two housing assistant coordinators that follow up with them and follow up with the landlords and make sure that they can sustain the housing that they're in. So um, we've been doing, all of these programs have been in place for about a year and a half now. Um, it's been extremely successful and the partnership with between community services and EPD, um, you know, I don't think there's many police agencies out there that have the personal relationship with those community members experiencing homelessness than, than EPD does. It's invaluable and um they are partners with all the agencies and advocates for those community members. And it's, it's been outstanding. And I think that this is not in any way an intent to um criminalize homeless. This is a, a, another tool to hopefully incentivize and encourage and allow for that um contact and that interaction to happen so that we can further these services.
Okay. And also I noticed that, um, I mean, that's just a few of the things that the city's done. But they've also done partnerships with Betty Chin, trying to find different ways to support people into different ways of living. Those kinds of programs. We have a lot of partnerships also. I just wanted to bring that up because I think it's really important. I think that sometimes we, well, that's not a question. So I'm going to move on. I'm sorry.
You.
An important thing. And then the last question I did want to ask was uh for Captain Stevens. So is there still zero enforcement at night for camping? I know that in the beginning, um, well, not in the beginning, but like four or five years ago, they were not enforcing during the evenings. Is that still happening?
Yes.
People sleep?
Yes, the city's, uh, the department's stance is still, um, you know, between like nine o'clock at night and seven in the morning is unless it's complaint-based, unless it's something that's causing a disturbance, somebody's calling us to actually say there's an issue at a camp. Uh, we have not proactively been out addressing camping issues. Uh, we do proactively address them in private property issues and situations because it does have an effect on the businesses and a lot of those open early. And there's a safety factor sometimes that is applied to the, or concerns, I guess, are applied by the employees as they come in. So we do try to address those, but generally uh public camping during the nighttime hours does not get any interaction with police. But generally, public camping during the nighttime hours does not get any interaction with police unless there's some type of complaint based issue that arises that we must respond to.
Thank you. Okay, was that it? All right. I don't see any other questions, so we're going to go to public comments, please.
Mayor, I do have one speaker who's on the phone waiting to call and then we'll have members that have joined our Zoom call.
Okay, thank you.
So just a moment. Go ahead, please.
First, I want to say that my sense is, having talked with some individual city council members, that is what is deep in your heart, that you would want every single person out there to have a beautiful place to stay and all the services and support they could possibly need to make their lives work for them. But at the same time, the reality is that we're not there yet. So what do we do with that? And, you know, there's no easy solution. I, what I would ask for, I guess I will state this, I should state it right up very close up time. If I happened to contact the Ureasty Mission twice to verify the information, and I believe this should be taken into account, that they are not currently accepting any new nighttime residents unless they have a hospital certified proof of negative COVID test. And also, I said, well, when will the restrictions be lifted? And they said, well, they have no way of knowing, you know, it's outside of their hands. So the reason I bring that up, and then they also said that, you know, I know that it changes, so I like to honor that, but how much possessions can people bring? And they said, they can bring, what can fit into two shopping, you know, the size of a Winko shopping bag and no beverages and no food and no pets. So I'm glad that they're there. I know they help people, but that is not, you know, and they told me at seven thirty they have to leave. So the reality is that it's my understanding that one of the justifications for the re code, the revamped code is that if there are, you know, if there's shelter available, you know, then therefore they can arrest or cite or move people along, you know, and I'm glad to hear you're not, you know, not citing people. But this is what I would ask, and I think it's a fair request. In the middle of COVID, this is, I see a lot of grit in the intentions of this group. I'm impressed and all, they're heartened. But in the middle of COVID, I would ask that we pause a second and we delay bringing it up until we can work out all these different criteria that come into effect. Because I think if you read Lost Coast Outpost, basically they said, you know, it was on the Thursday, that we have to treat everybody as though they have COVID. You know, and we're up in red zone and, you know, and the thing is, I understand what your intention is, and I'm not an expert. As I've often said, so you probably recognize my voice, I've had some foot issues, so I haven't really gotten around as much as I want to. But I can tell you the impact of what these kind of regulations are on the people that they've explained to me. I've heard so many times from so many people that they went, they don't know me, I don't know why they're telling me this, that they were suicidal. I heard one man say that he tried to kill himself twice. And he had been at some of the facilities and he no longer was allowed, you know, and I'm sure that's very complicated. But the impact on people outside to be told that they have to keep moving, and, you know, that's great that they're allowed to stay until sunrise, but what they're telling me is that they're forced to move along with no place to go. So, I mean, I think the bottom line is, all these things that you say, Kim and everybody, they're beautiful and wonderful and heartening. But our community, and I don't, I blame all of us that we haven't figured out, and I know the rest is moving forward to create some alternative sites. The people out there are all unique individuals. They don't fit into some of the programs you have. And they have to be sort of, you know, people who are, who are ready for that. A lot of them aren't. It doesn't mean they're they want to be safe from the, from the criminals as much as we, we do.
No, I know you have a lot to say and I totally understand and I appreciate it very much, but thank you so much.
All that everybody's doing, but I would say let's delay this and wait until we can incorporate everybody's point of view and make it something that works for everybody when COVID is passing through us.
All right, thank you very much.
Pam is amazing. She says so terrific. I can't sing more high praise as word to help me get online. So thank you, thank you. Okay.
All right. Mayor, the rest of our speakers are on Zoom, so if they want to raise their hands, I can call on them.
Wait, oh, it looks like Rebecca Smith is at, or raised her hand.
Okay.
Okay, Rebecca.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca. I work at Legal Services of Northern California. I comment tonight to urge the city council to repeal section ninety three point O two and not replace the proposed ordinance. I want to start by mentioning the timing of this issue. We're in the midst of a serious public health crisis that has had enormous implications and exacerbated homelessness and poverty in our community and beyond. I appreciate the city's proclamation on national hunger and homelessness awareness. Part of the proclamation includes, quote, that homelessness is not a crime and that, quote, no one should have to worry about whether they have food on their plate or a roof over the head, their head. I think the city has an opportunity tonight to breathe some meaning into this proclamation by not adopting the rewritten section ninety three point O two, which in effect does criminalize homelessness and certainly does nothing to work towards the stated goal of this proclamation. I'll briefly touch on the legal issues that I see with this ordinance. But it's more thoroughly discussed in the letter that I've submitted and may be most relevant to the city attorney. First, the proposed replacement ordinance still violates the Eighth Amendment's prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment by imposing criminal penalties on homeless residents of the city who have no choice but to sit, sleep and lie on public property. The ordinance also raises due process issues. It does not provide an ordinary person with sufficient notice of what is prohibited, when, where and by who, and awards far too much discretion to individual police officers. The issue of criminalizing the symptoms and conditions related to homelessness is one with national implications. And other municipalities' efforts to enact similar prohibitions have been met with strong interest from advocacy groups and extensive litigation. I think this liability has been acknowledged by the city attorney and should be considered seriously. Why do this now? The issue is still being litigated. The contours of what's permissible may become more clear. I appreciate the city attorney and the sergeant's comments that this would be unlikely to result in jail time and comments related to the other tools that the police would use. But to be clear, the ordinance does allow arrest, significant fines and jail time. Also, just to be clear, excessive fines are part of the protection of the Eighth Amendment. And an ordinance fining individuals for camping involuntarily does violate the Eighth Amendment. I've been unable to find any data suggesting that these ordinance improve or address homelessness. Passing this ordinance is ineffective and likely an expensive step for the city to take. The city of Eureka, as demonstrated by its proclamation and many other efforts, has a clear vision and goal to address homelessness in a moral, humane and dignified way. Rewriting an ordinance that has been found unconstitutional due to criminalizing one's status as homeless does not bode well for or appear consistent with the city's goals. I'll end by reading part of a recent decision. In holding that the city's anti-camping ordinance violated homeless individuals' Eighth Amendment rights, the court concludes, there are many options available to grants passed to prevent the erection of encampments that cause public health and safety concerns without violating the Eighth Amendment. The court reminds governing bodies of the importance of empathy and thinking outside the box. We must try harder to protect the most vulnerable citizens. Let's not forget that homeless individuals are citizens just as much as is fortunate enough to have secure living space. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And do you have, do you have a list, Pam, that we can call the next person?
I, I do not. If they could raise the hand, okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I would like to, for those that do not know me or recognize me, my name is Vernon Price. I am a resident of Eureka two seventeen, D Street, apartment three ten. I am speaking tonight as a person with lived experience of homelessness of fifteen years. I am also speaking as a regional ambassador for the Superior Region of Access California and Cal Voices. I would like to first start off by thanking every one of the council members, the city attorney, Captain Stevens, Sergeant LaFrance mainly, of really putting in a lot of hard work and trying to find something that is reasonable for all parties involved. But I would also would be remiss if I would not acknowledge what Rebecca Smith has just said. I would like to quote one thing very briefly from a federal judge. It is not camping when you are homeless. This is Michael McShane, federal district judge for the District of Oregon, and this is a quote from two thousand and fifteen of University of Oregon Law School graduation. There's a lot of people that have no choice, and this isn't camping, this is survival. This is causing a lot of post-traumatic stress disorder. This causes depression and multiple class one diagnoses through our DS MP. I think that we really need to take a step back and do some more work on this involving those of us. I am a former mental health board member here in Humboldt County. I think that consumers or former homeless people need to get involved with some of this decision making for it to be productive and proactive. Thank you so much for your time, your concern and your consideration on this. And again, thank you all for all of the hard work and the effort that you have put in to add the, bring a better quality of life to those underserved and less served in our community and still treating them as human beings with feelings and emotions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, do we have another speaker?
Is there, is there, I don't know how to raise a hand.
I was going to ask Mariah, I saw you had a thumbs up and I was like, is that a hand raising?
I just, I didn't even know what the thumbs up earlier, so. Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not very prepared for this, but I would say it's pretty ironic that there was the adoption and foster child piece earlier this evening because Harvard and the Casey Foundation did a study that adults who lived in the foster system as children suffer homeless at a homelessness at a greater rate than combat veterans. And, I know, also PTSD and you know, it's just, I don't know, I'm not very prepared for this, but you know, as far as homeless saying, you know, refusing services, I mean, I don't know, it's just, I mean, a lot of the people have suffered through so much and being in a shelter, sleeping with a mass of other people in a room triggers things that they might not even have words for because things that happened to them before they had words. I worked with children in the foster system. I lived in the foster system. And you don't even want to know. Let me tell you, people get so up in arms when they read an article about child abuse. But when those children grow up without, you know, the, the care and you heard the numbers earlier tonight, they end up as adults that are, you know, have all sorts of pieces missing and, and, and and they have great skills and all kinds of other things that might come from it, but a lot of the people on the streets are suffering terribly. They're veterans of a war that hasn't been declared. There's not been uniforms or benefits or flags flying. These are people who have been veterans of the war that humanity has against itself, its own children. You know, it's vulnerable. And, and the last thing I just want to say is that when the children see how adults are laying on the streets and suffering and not, you know, being cared for or having shelter, basic needs, they, they inside know that if they mess up someday, they could end up that way. You know, and they, they get what our values are by what they see, not by, you know, just what they're taught is, you know, ideal or whatever. So I just, I think we can do better in terms of, there needs to be more, like, you know, Vernon was saying, more with the actual homeless having a say, more autonomy in places, a twenty-four seven, you know, place where people can have stability to camp. You know, and so this ordinance just seems like it puts way too much in the hands of police who frankly, they are overwhelmed, in my opinion, you know, with us sweeping all of our lack of civil responsibility and duties. You know, but there's twenty-six participants right now tonight. I'm sort of shocked, but you know, we just sweep it under the, the thin blue rug, I call it, or, you know, and, and give it to Betty Chin. And, you know, so I don't, I just think it gives, it just gives too much. I like what I heard. I didn't get to hear the whole meeting. I don't have quite the technology, but I heard, you know, Leslie's questions and also what Rebecca was saying, and then the one thing about, what was the other thing? About, oh, you know, where do they go? Where, are we telling them where they can camp, you know?
I'm afraid it's
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Thank you. Everybody is so passionate. I hate cutting people off, but I saw Nezzy Wade put up a little thumbs up and I was wondering if that was a hand raising.
It was because I don't have, I don't have a hand raise thing. The chat is turned off for some reason, so I can't access it. But I'd like to make a comment. I, I, I want to thank everyone for bringing up some wonderful questions and for the work that's been done on this. And I really want to appreciate law enforcement's position on wanting this to be something as a tool that would be compassionate to create conversation and all of those things. I have some real concerns about that because so much of what is being discussed here is philosophy and attitude and approach, potential dialogue, a tool. It's very ideological and lofty and it sounds very good, whereas the law is the law, and even though it's open to interpretation, it's, it's the law and it's mostly after the fact. So I have a lot of concerns about those kinds of things coming into play, particularly because I've read this stuff and I also agree with the city attorney that while we don't have a legal validation, which is something we should be very, very concerned about, we're going to be restricting zones, which we've done through time, place and manner and all those things historically, but this is really extensive. And if you look at the maps and you see what's being suggested, that's, that is pretty extensive. And, you know, the, the idea is to get people off the street. I have the same question. Where do they go? And, you know, having a conversation that says, well, where's a better place to camp? Well, where is a better place to camp? And the answer that the city attorney gave was, well, they have the opportunity now to explore where they can go. That just sounds like pushing people around to me because they're going to find out they can't go here and they can't go there. And it seems it would be much more proactive if we created, and because we haven't created spaces, the, the sense that it's going to end up in people being concentrated in certain areas or it will take place constantly. Because we haven't been proactive in creating a variety of opportunities for people to be in various places. We don't have that to deal with at this time. So if, if not in the areas that are being available, what is available to people? And what, what can reasonably involve folks and, and hear those, those voices from the homeless community? Because I think that's extremely important. There are people, I, I heard the part about, you know, criminal elements and people having warrants and, and, you know, people that are suspected of different things and that some people want to avoid the police. That's absolutely true, absolutely true. But that's because that hasn't turned out to be a really good experience for them as well. So I wonder, I'm really concerned about the people that I see on the street that are, are on the sidewalks, that are in business districts that I feed often and take, and, and offer my, my, my care and resources to and help get, help get them connected. I wonder what is that going to be for them? And, and there's been a lot of lack of talking about the specifics about, well, what happens if there isn't a place and where do, what happens to people then? We've never gotten to the place where that's ever been said in this meeting and I really want to know.
Thank you, thank you, Nezzy. And I saw Greg Holtz had his, had a clap sign up for a minute.
Oh, no, I was just clapping at a commenter.
Um, all right, do we have anybody else who wants to speak? And if you
I would like to say something.
Okay, George and then Winchell. I saw George had his hand up. Oh, we can't hear you. But we can't hear.
No.
No. Oh, now you can, maybe.
Okay. Yes, I was just made aware of this ordinance, this proposed ordinance the other day and had concerns about it. I'm still not completely versed on the legal ramifications of being without housing in the city of Eureka. But from what I was trying to read and from what I've been hearing on this call is that this ordinance, my concern was that it would have intent to criminalize. And what I'm hearing is the attorney saying that it won't be used as a hammer of enforcement. And yet, it is needed for the purpose of enforcement. And yet it is needed for the purpose of enforcement. And that sounds at least quite muddled and. Contradictory to the spirit of compassion that. I understand the council wants to go towards and that citizens want to go towards. And likewise, I am also concerned about the timing of this with COVID. And the COVID economic downturn, which is causing us to look at potentially estimates. Nationwide of 30 million people becoming evicted. Because of the economic. The extreme economic downturn that we're facing. So I'm really concerned about this ordinance and I just wanted to voice my concerns and encourage the council to reject this. And again, I appreciated what Rebecca was saying about the legal aspects. I'm, I'm understanding that that's. The legal ramifications of this are quite negative as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, Winchell?
Yeah. I agree with what all of the advocates and public comments are. I also to appreciate all the work that has been put in, there are a lot of good questions here. However, you can't just take away space and I said this at the top on the proclamation, you have to have alternatives. And what you're gonna wind up is people are gonna go to these places if you send them there and then. You said, oh, well, it's a lot to, you know, provide sanitation and, you know, showers and toilets, garbage facilities. You're gonna have that problem consistently. And what I think you need to realize that I don't, you know. I think you'll have legal issues aside from this, but. You know, these people need a place to go, you can't keep moving them around, you need. You know, and I've been saying this for years and, you know, now COVID is here. And I look at the, the cities and the county and advocates have been telling them what the solution has been. I've been doing this four and a half years. And all I've run into is the political ill will and the lack of funding. To find legal safe sanctioned camps. And I agree with Nezzy Wade on this highfaluted, you know, philosophy. You've got to understand the state of mind of people who have lived on the streets and I. I know this firsthand from my own family. You know, so I would urge you not to move until you can find. Places that you can put them legally, where you can provide the necessary services. You know, when I got involved with this issue, God, I, I went back to, oh, we're gonna solve homelessness in 2005. Well, here we are and people keep talking and everybody's putting out these programs. And we still have them on the streets. And, you know, I understand it's a problem for people, you know, public lands and businesses. It is a problem, so you need to find the solutions that. The advocates have been putting on your plate and move towards them. Otherwise, you're just gonna continue to move this around, you're gonna continue to have all these same problems. And, and I also agree with the fact that. 25% of the population is struggling, we're coming into rent evictions. We could see this really spike even more. And it's really, really tough. You know, it sounds good sometimes, you know, nobody ever tells me how many people stay in their homes. When you put them there and I've heard the homeless say it's, it's great that you have case management. But it's pretty spotty and I, I've been a financial advisor for 35 years now. I know how hard it is to dig yourself out.
Thank you, Winchell.
You're very welcome.
Um, do we have any other speakers? I see only people on one page, there's nobody missing, I don't think. All right, so it is seven, oh wait, no, it's 7:55. We're gonna take a break and then we'll come back for comments, is that cool? And so I will see you, we'll be back at 8:05? Or even eight, I'm good with eight, let's do eight o'clock, five minutes.
Over that period of time, once we've reached these urban environments. Have dealt with issues of homelessness, mental health issues, things like that, it is something that every society on earth. Struggles with and especially here in America because. Of malfeasance in my opinion from the federal government and their unwillingness to budget to address these issues and. Here in Eureka, I feel like Eureka, we're doing the best we can as a tiny little city. Whether it's going off for grant applications or starting nonprofits or working with nonprofit partners. To really try and address some of these issues that face Humboldt County, just like the rest of the world. But at the same time, we have to realize that we live in a society and. Each society we choose to live in has rules to those societies and when people don't follow the rules, like. Hey, I don't believe in stop signs, I'm not gonna stop. Then there are problems for the other members of society who follow those rules. And so when there's issues like homelessness and houselessness or mental health issues. Where there's no other. Ways or means to, to help these individuals because there's not enough funding, there's not enough being done. Then, then that impacts the other people of society who are trying to follow and live within these rules and needs. And item C3 to me as an ordinance seems to me more like a tool of escalation. A last dash approach that law enforcement can take. If there's really severe issues that other members of society, members of society who are trying to follow the rules. Are being impacted by. And that's not to say that, that people experiencing houselessness don't deserve their own rights and protections, they absolutely do. But we have to face reality sometimes that, that perhaps there are certain areas of the city where it isn't appropriate to always camp in. Because it affects other members of societies. So I can't help but think of some of my friends who I work with at the hospital as nurses who live in Old Town. And they deal with, with, you know, a lot of these individuals at work in their professions and then as neighbors and. You know, when, when there aren't tools to try and work with individuals who might be problematic at times. Then in a way, that's, that's very unfair to other members of society who are trying to contribute and help. And so I truly believe that EPD is, you know, their philosophy is that they cannot cite their way out of problems. That is not their first approach. Look at the way CSAT responds to incidences, just the, just the formation of that alone. Showcases that EPD and the city are really trying to approach these, these issues of homelessness and poverty and mental health. In different ways other than criminalizing people, but sometimes they need tools to be able to. Do their job so that there is a balance and restorative effect for every member of society. And I really think that EPD isn't going to put everyone in jail when the, if this ordinance goes live. I think it's just a tool of escalation where they can use this as a tool. To perhaps strike a conversation with someone to get, to get help, to get, or to, yeah, just. Not be in that part of, of the city where there's issues and. Yeah, it's unfortunate, I really think the city does all we can, I'd love to see what other cities can do, say like Fortuna. And, you know, do what we can in the best we can with the abilities that we have, so. Needless to say, I really appreciate the public commentary and the support. But in a way, I am in favor of this ordinance because it is a tool, I think it would be a last ditch tool, but it's something. That we should really consider.
Thank you, do we have any other comments? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. I have. A few comments, try to keep them organized. First, I just wanna state a couple of concerns that. That I don't feel like we've. Completely addressed and that is the concerns about the pandemic and just the concerns about. That. Due to a wide variety of experiences, placing someone in a shelter could be placing someone in a compromised situation. And I mean absolutely no disrespect to anyone who. Does the hard and difficult work of operating a shelter here and, and I appreciate. All of your, all of your work. And it's, it's not about the shelter itself, it's, it's about what has been spoken to in terms of like past trauma and things like that. I, let's see. I do think that. Policies should best articulate what we want to see in the world. And so. You know, when we, when we say. Okay, well, this isn't in the policy, but it's what should happen or what we want to happen or what is happening in the community, then I wonder. Why can't we put that into the policy? And I think that, you know, that's kind of our job. Is to put the things into our policy that we want to see in the world. And so I, I do think it would be a worthwhile challenge to, you know, if, if diversion and if. You know, like positive interactions or. You know, help, help is, is what we want to see, then I think that that. Should be in the policy because, and I really value, you know, like, like the work that. I've seen EPD doing in terms of, you know, helping people. But I also think that. Like it, it should be policy, I guess. You know, let's see, I, I also wanna express though that like I've had numerous. Business owners come to me with. Like very valid concerns and frustrations about what they're experiencing. Trying to operate a business, you know, and, and this is not an easy time to operate a business. And, and I've actually seen the kind of lack of policy or lack of, of being able to do anything, create more animosity. Between business people and people who are houseless. And so that's something that I think not doing anything has increased that where. People really, business owners, you know, I think we need to do something to support business owners. What I'm wondering is if, a few things. Is if it would make sense to flesh out more involuntary camping. I have some specific thoughts about the map and area. And you're gonna love this. About a charrette. I'm wondering about a charrette around this topic. Because I do feel like it's such a kind of meaty top, sorry to the vegetarians, it's such a meaty topic that I think there's it it deserves more than than maybe we can accomplish in in this one moment. But but here's what what I think about the the actual business districts in the in the map. I would say to reduce the areas, I would say the waterfront business district, and this is where it's going to get really like you won't know what I'm talking about. Unless you're looking at a map right now. But the exclude the excluding area should be only south of either Del Norte or Vega Street and northeast of M Street. I think all parks except for Halverson Park should be excluded. I think that Old Town and I was I was fine with Henderson Center, the area defined there. I also thought Old Town and downtown, except for west of C and north of Broadway. And then and here, this was a thought, though, as I as we were in this process was to make the the forbidden or excluded areas smaller and then create something that was about ten within 10 feet of business entrances during the day. So so those are kind of my thoughts about this right now. Oh, and then one, sorry, one more thought, and that is, I think, though, there that area, I guess that would be just southish of the Whorfinger could be utilized in some way for, I don't know, I, yeah, for people.
Thank you very much, council member Castellano. And council member Arroyo.
So I came into this topic thinking this is another one of those topics where you make absolutely no one happy. There is no potential outcome here where all stakeholders will be happy with the outcome. That said, we obviously have a useless ordinance on the books that is no longer relevant. And so we need to change it. And I too have heard enough from folks in the community who have significant concerns and think we are not doing our job by not having some sideboards around the issue of public camping. So I have, that's probably the number one thing people contact me about. And I have talked to a lot of folks recently who own businesses that are struggling. They're just barely getting by and keeping their doors open and they just cannot take it anymore. And they are not interested in coming to a public meeting because they don't want to seem hateful or, you know, voice the concerns very broadly, which I understand. And so I think we're we're stuck in this difficult place where, you know, while while we are each year supporting the construction or conversion of hundreds of units of housing, like just in the last couple of months, we have approved or started the process moving forward for hundreds and hundreds of units, much to the chagrin of people who have very nimbly views about it. You know, so here we are as a really teensy city approving projects that will create housing, affordable housing for people who desperately need it in our community. Like, there's no question in my mind that people desperately need housing in this community. And we are here, we are here for it. Like, we are here doing it to the best of our ability, despite the fact that it really isn't easy for people to agree about where it should go. And what is even harder to agree about is where could people camp in our city? I have weathered the creation of permitted sleeping sites and that rotated and that did not work well at all. And the marsh situation was absolutely untenable. And it was it was a nightmare. So here we are now. I think I can, I I agree that Old Town Henderson Center, the grounds of the zoo and the golf course are unsuitable areas for camping. Whether all of these other boundaries are drawn exactly right, I don't know for sure, but I know that a lot of them are wetlands and a lot of them are really close to trails.
You just hit your mute button, Natalie.
Thank you. I got to gesturing and then I, so a lot of the the areas on the map that are essentially crossed out right now are really close to trails and highways and wetlands. And and that makes sense in my mind. I have gotten a lot of concerns from residents that this will mean that folks will be pushed into neighborhoods and, you know, questioning whether that's our intent. But I I can't see a path forward for us to concentrate folks during a pandemic any more than the existing shelters and opportunities for people do. So if folks are going to camp and the shelter spaces available don't work for them, then I see logic in it being dispersed and it being, you know, something where our our enforcement folks are out there to provide education and resource connections, but not to be out there with a big hammer. Now that said, the area of the ordinance that I so I I want to go through a couple of points. One is that the unlawful camping section says, C one says it's not lawful unless we say it is. So for those of you who want us to create an option where we say it is, like, I think that leaves the window open to continue working on that, which I see as a potential opportunity. I know people want to see the worst in this ordinance, but there's also the aspect of if it's approved by policy or by the city council, then then that's different. Then it spells out where camping is not suitable. And it goes on to say that if people are engaging in obstructive conduct as defined in our code, then that's not okay. Otherwise, it says involuntary camping where people don't have another choice that works for them and that's construed pretty broadly is lawful in other areas of the city. And if people say it's okay on their private property and it meets certain criteria, then it can happen there. So that leaves the option open for folks who want to purchase or use private property to allow for folks to camp there, for stakeholders in the community to work with us to potentially find something that would work for C one, where it's expressly permitted. And as just shown in this agenda, we are working to like allow for land use to be changed and converted to support housing. And so I think that this council has shown we're willing and interested to do that. And I have no reason to believe that the incoming council will stray wildly from that path. We'll have to see. But what I take a lot of issue, well, I don't want to say I take issue with, where I think there's room for change that I'd like to address in this meeting tonight is section F where it talks about the penalties. If the concern from a lot of community members, which is what I've heard loud and clear is concern around it potentially being a path towards criminalization of homelessness. And that's exactly what we're trying to avoid with this ordinance. And when I look at section 10.99 of our municipal code, which is what's referred to in the draft ordinance, I see the general penalty section that talks about the sort of standard process for handling infractions and misdemeanors and then how they stack up and how they turn into more than that. And that's where I think if we have a restorative justice component, I wonder if we could outline it here differently or if we could just limit the penalty instead of saying reference section 10.99 and this is all open to interpretation by our our staff. If we want to say that the maximum penalty is something different, then I think, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney Black, I think that is within our power to do. Is is that true?
Yes, it is. And I think you could specify that a violation of this section is an infraction as opposed to a misdemeanor.
That certainly seems appealing to me. And I think we could even go so far as to say a violation of this will be only an infraction at the lowest level. Or, yeah, we could just stick with infraction. I mean, those do add up. But, you know, infraction or other, you know, restorative justice alternative. I think that to me would take a lot of the the fear away from it being used differently and as a bigger hammer. So those are my comments. I don't think I have any major changes to make to the ordinance or the map that it that it essentially creates at this time, based on what I've said just now. But I would be interested in making that change to it and would be interested to hear other council members' comments.
Sorry, council member Messner.
All right. Well, there is a lot here. And I first of all, really appreciate everyone coming out tonight and just expressing your thoughts and not just coming out tonight, but also the emails that we received regarding this item. I'd like to share with you a story about one of our homeless who was not capable of staying in a shelter due to trauma. And council member Virgil, myself, our officers, those at the county, we all knew her by name. I would sit by her next to her when I would find her and we'd drink coffee and chat together on just ways to on on what she needed. And building trust like that with our officers and with our council members, because there are council members who actually spend time doing this on a regular basis and working together with with the county and and our all the city, the county and officers or some of our council members work toward finding permanent homes. And she is in a permanent home now and she's doing well. This is just one of many, many stories that are rarely heard that our Cape, our uplift, our C set team, our pathway to Paywood Day, our enhancement program that is being put in, the way that we have changed codes to make it possible to build more housing. We've been aggressively adding more housing in our city. All of these things have been the consistent and determined effort by this council is as well as partnerships that we've created. I I believe there was another 40 beds. I'm not positive that's the exact number, but by the county that just opened up in Eureka, we are continuing to create more. And there was an app that was created to show real time spaces for shelter embeds. And we have, we're still working on that, you know, would like to do more with that app. So are our officers and so our city can work with people who are homeless. This reveals the fact that we are actually in a place where we've created many, many places for people to go and are continuing to do so to find services, the services they need. So they are not in increment weather, that they are not exposed to the elements. One of the number one ways that homeless people die is because of that exposure and they have a very short lifespan once they're on the streets. That it is not kind to leave them on the streets. And we have, like I said, been extremely intentional about all these different ways that we have put all these different things that we have put into place. And we have people working every day in very, very hard and difficult situations to bring people out of the streets and off the streets. And this is your tax dollars at work. And this is, this is just another way. We work with Aha, with showers, mobile showers for the homeless. And there are businesses, particularly downtown, who are cleaning up human feces and needles before being able to open. They are paying employees to do that so they can actually open their businesses every single day. This camping camping ordinance creates a better option than the street for people. It actually says, we are trying to help you. It's a way for our officers to create or to have more tools to help people with the options that are there. To say we haven't done anything, we just haven't done stuff for the healthiest community is to say that, you know, all the things that I just mentioned that we've done in the last four years since I've been on council is nothing. I believe we worked extremely hard to come to a place where we have so many opportunities for people. And as council member Arroyo mentioned, the ordinance allows us to work with those who are interested in providing more. And as I've looked into the history around our country of many of the places that have put in camps and places for to work with the homeless and places for shelter, the best place or the best success stories are not when a city does it. It's when community members work together to bring this about with nonprofits. So the community, the city is working with nonprofits to put those in place. That is the most successful, the most successful examples across the country. And it's not a city paying for it and trying to figure out how to make it all happen and paying people to do it. And so we have left room in this ordinance to allow for working hand side by side. And we have continued to do that. I think Mariah was an earlier speaker who gave us a perfect example of why this might be something we need to put into place. Because where there are people all over our streets and businesses, creating options for them is the humane and kind thing to do. And it helps our children see that we do care for our homeless and we're not leaving them on the streets. We're helping them, trying to help them. I would be interested also in seeing section F. Maybe that could be an infraction as opposed to a misdemeanor and I am interested in that as well. But I am definitely in a place where I feel like we, this is something that we need to do. And I am, I am ready to to make this move tonight.
Is that you making a motion? Okay.
I can do, I I can do that.
You said you wanted to make the move, so I sound.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't have the actual verbiage up. I would have to pull it up. I had it in another section because I was reading some stuff that.
I was just.
I actually will, actually. I think the section F part, I'm not positive I have the exact right language for that. Because we have kind of massaged that out and see where everyone else is at on that. But I will make the motion to waive full reading, read by title only and introduce bill number 989 CS in ordinance of the city of Eureka repealing and replacing section 93 point oh.
CS in ordinance of the city of Eureka repealing and replacing section ninety three point oh two of title. Not, is that nine? No, what is that? But I don't know what that, is that one X? I don't know what that is. Chapter ninety three parks and recreation camping. What'd you say?
That's nine. That's title nine. Yes.
Okay, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure. Title nine. And then to possibly make that change, to make that change in section F, to make it an infraction as opposed to a misdemeanor, and maybe referencing that would, I think, be helpful in that section. So that's what I would add.
I'll second that with the friendly amendment.
Okay. Is that how we do that, Pam? Can you second it and then amend it there? And Kim will get to you with discussion.
I believe he seconded it with the amendment.
With the amendment. Oh, okay. I thought he was making. And now it looks like we have some discussion. Councilmember Bergel?
Thank you. I think some really good points have been made tonight. Thank you, everybody, for commenting and really being thoughtful about what you had to say. The thing about the thing about our job as city council members, I believe, is that we need to take into consideration the whole population and not focus on just one specific, if it's going to hurt the rest of the population. And unfortunately, we've had issues in Old Town and all throughout our town for quite a long time. I too get those calls where people are just like, you know, I had to clean up feces again. I had this happening. I had this happening. This guy was sleeping in my thing. There's so much trash everywhere. What am I, you know, I'm, I'm barely hanging on. And, and yet this is going on. And I really, I believe that leaving people on the streets, I do believe, I believe that's inhumane, and I think that it takes, sometimes it takes time to make those connections to support people out of that. But meeting people where they're at is critical to show folks maybe a better quality of life. You know, I don't know what's best for people, but being able to have those conversations and have them tell me what we can do to support them is a really big, a big piece of it. And that's why I support this ordinance. I support this ordinance because I think it gives some relief to our business owners. It gives a feeling of safety to our community who is walking on the trails, whether that's, whether that's perceived fear or real, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. People are afraid to go on the trail. They're, you know, they're upset whether there's just, you know, maybe feces only one day a week, you know, and they perceive it as every day. It's, it's part of its perception. But the reason I, I, I support this is I think it gets at a couple of things. It gets at, and number one, it, it supports our local businesses and our city as a whole. Secondly, by creating new tools for our community, you know, our houses community or for our CSET team, not only CSET though, there's a lot of people out there working with the homeless population, and I think that sometimes we forget about that, but there's a whole, whole lot of groups out there. But any way we can create a new tool to make that connection with somebody, I think, you know, then, then I'm all for that. I think that we've done a really great job in and been very thoughtful in how we were going to move forward and support people the best way that we can. And I think we've done a good job, but there's always work to do. There's always work to do. And I'm grateful that I'm on a council that actually has enough compassion to continue to do that work. I really appreciate each and every one of you because we've all worked very hard on this, this issue. So the only thing on the, on the F, I like the infraction, but I really, I really like the idea of the restorative justice. I think that is a wonderful tool to support people. It's not an infraction that gives them an opportunity to make amends, if you will, or to feel good about themselves for making a change. And so that's, those are my thoughts. You know, I think that the business community will feel a great deal of relief over this time. And I think that it's just another tool to reach out to our homeless population. It's not going to be perfect, but nothing is. We have to, we have to continue trying different things so that we can finally, you know, we're making progress. We need to continue to keep going with that. So you know, I appreciate that we've been working on housing and all the things we've been working on, and I absolutely support this.
Would you like to modify your?
I'm sorry, Susan, could we add restorative justice or the diversion program, or is it?
Austin, if he wanted to, to add to his motion.
I was the one who made the motion, so I think I have to.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's why I raised my hand. Yeah. So, um, yeah, I, I think that would be great to add. That's something I know we would, we would love to see. So, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Castellano, you have more discussion?
Yeah, I have a quick question first for City Attorney Black. Is this the kind of thing, i- is this ordinance, are we going to have a second reading of it? Or is this, or is this? Yes?
Yes, this will be, there will be a second reading.
Okay, so I'm curious of council, if you would be interested in seeing the map that I proposed at a second reading and having a choice between the two areas.
Councilmember Bergel?
I would be interested in looking at. I don't know that it would change my mind, but I certainly would be interested in, in what you bring forward. I think it's important to have a thorough discussion.
And everybody else, would anybody else want to see?
I feel the same way. I don't know if it changed my mind, but I'll take a look. I like being objective.
Yeah, I'm, I feel the same. I'll definitely get it.
Sure, it's me here, but I, I'm curious, is that the intent of, I mean, I, I think that's kind of not like passing something with the intent to change it at the second reading is sort of not.
I was gonna ask about that.
I don't think it's unusual that when we bring a, when we bring something forward for a second reading, that we don't necessarily look at different information. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are going to change our minds or information. But certainly looking at the minority opinion and looking at that kind of discussion, I think, you know, I don't know there's a harm in it. Am I wrong, City Attorney Black?
No, you're not wrong. And I think the, one of the points of a second reading is to give yourself the chance for second thoughts. Whether that, the adoption of a completely new map may create a situation where there needs to be a third reading, if it changes it to such an extent. I'd like to have the opportunity to, to take a look at the impact or the import of that and possibly just circulate a memo to you about how that's going to work in the public sphere. But remember, this is kind of an important one to get right. And if Leslie has, if Councilmember Castellano has a better map, then certainly I would think you'd want to adopt the better map. So I, I don't think we should worry too much about the procedural ins and outs.
So we could just move forward with the motion and vote on it without including the maps in the motion. That's just part of the discussion for next time. Is that how it works?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Messner?
Real quick, I, I know that there was someone who did send us some concerns they had about the map not matching. There were like two different maps that got put out, so it will be important that I think we are clear on what, what our final map is going to look like. So I, we just want to make sure that everything that we, we finalize is consistent, I think, because there was possibly some inconsistency in some of the public information that was dispersed. So just wanting to make sure that that happens as well once we do adopt this completely.
Okay. So we have a motion and we, oh, Councilmember Castellano?
I, right now, I just want to say I feel slightly conflicted about how I will personally go forward because there's still a few areas that I feel need to be fleshed out in addition to the map. And that is how involuntary camping is stated and described. And then also mention of the, like, the, the, the idea that we want to like have some mention of a policy for like interaction or a, interaction or assessment of people as they are camping or, or how, how that would go. Se- seems important to me. So, you know, like, as it is now, without those things, I'm, I would not, though I do want some protection for businesses, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting yes on this ordinance.
Um, Councilmember Allison?
Um, I'd like to call for the vote.
Okay, I was, um, that's okay. Let's have a vote, please.
Wait, can I, can I ask a clarifying question? Is that a thing when someone calls for the vote?
I would ask, I would defer to Assistant City Manager Powell on that.
Usually when the, the question is called, we move forward with the vote.
Got it. Okay.
The person who called the question could accept an amendment. Or, you know, could ask for a clarification.
I think someone has to second the call for the vote.
Pam, does somebody have to second that?
I don't have my rulebook in front of me. I'm sorry. I don't have my binder.
I have a cheat sheet for Robert's rules right here. If that's what we're following, then that has to be seconded.
We do, I actually was called the question by Melinda Chiarabellini when I was brand new, and that was not a seconded motion, so I.
I remember that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, um.
City has a, never heard of a second ever on a call for vote.
Okay. So, okay, so let's just call for the vote. And we do still have the second ordinance that we could go around and ask more questions next time if we need something to change, even though we're voting on the ordinance as is now. But like Bob was saying, the second reading is the opportunity for us to sort of chew on this a little bit more and be more clair, clear in what we want the next time. So if there's a clarifying question, perhaps we can ask that afterwards. Okay, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
No.
Councilmember Messner?
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Hi.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergel?
Hi.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Castellano dissenting. Motion carries.
All right.
Mayor Seaman, may I still make my brief comment?
Now you can.
Thank you. I just honestly didn't understand what Leslie was asking for in the second part about the clarification around the involuntary camping. But if that needs to be clarified in the second reading, I would be happy to see the clarifications that are needed or being asked for come back. I just think our staff will need to know that to be able to bring forward something clearer.
I saw Baba nodding his head. Okay, wait, I now I just have to ask a point of order thing before we start getting to a bunch of people asking questions about this, Assistant City Manager Powell. Now that we've had the vote, are we allowed to continue to talk about it?
I would ask our city attorney that question.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, you took action on an agendized matter. And there was a vote, an affirmative vote, but it was still agendized, and I think it's, I think it's permissible for you to consider additional questions that might arise, that did arise during the meeting. So yes, I think you can, you can do that.
Thank you. All kinds of new stuff today. Councilmember Messner?
I, I was also curious about what Councilmember Arroyo was asking. I had the same question. Whether it was a friendly amendment that Councilmember Castellano was asking for or to make a secondary motion. I was a little confused on where we were going with that. So I would just, if we, when we come back, it would be great to have that ahead of time, like if there's more changes or anything like that, so that that could be presented at that time in a clear way, so we can see what that is, so we're not confused. I just don't want to be confused. And so it'd just be easy to have it in writing or have it clear at our second reading.
And would that, would that mean having Councilmember Castellano work with staff to maybe come up with some language that she would share at the next meeting, or she'd make up her own language that she would bring to the meeting? I just want to know what that actual a- action is that we're asking for.
Yeah, make up your own language. Just, just bring that.
Well, I mean, then we discuss it then.
There were pretty clear sideboards, I think, and, and from my perspective at least, what I heard was that we were talking about considering the modifications that were explained in this meeting, but that we probably didn't get to like write down to the map or to like the boundaries. And then I think there just is some question around the language for involuntary camping. That's what I heard, and I'd be willing to consider both of those things because they're not like massive changes in intent, but rather like clarifying language or things like that. So how we get there doesn't matter to me.
All right. Are we all, are we all free, good to move on now?
I think City Manager Slattery has something.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Councilmember Castellano. Mayor, I think that the modifications for Councilmember Castellano are requesting have been sent to staff in an email, and I think that we can put that together and provide that for council. And then also I think it'd be best if Councilmember Castellano just clarified what the confusion is, and then staff could come up with some more clarifying language to bring back to council.
Okay. That sounds good. I think everybody's in, in agreement, so.
I had one other quick, quick question. Does that mean, so if it's not significant, then at the next meeting, that would still be our second reading, unless it's significant? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's, that's the approach we're going to take.
Okay.
Yeah. And so there may be, there may be some law on this that I will research and try to clarify for everybody. But in the, in the meantime, if it's significant changes, I think we're going to treat it as a new reading and probably end up voting on it with the changes yet again, so.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that particularly because two of us will not be at the second reading if it goes to a third reading. So it would be important to try to keep that in the containment of not significant.
But I honestly, though, sorry, I, I mean, if it needs to go, it's better to make a better ordinance than speed it up because we have a change in council.
Yes, and there are four votes to accept it as it is. So I'm, I'm just, you know, if it's some not super significant changes to it, then it would make sense.
So we'll, we'll look at it next time and, and Bob will explore what our options are, and we will move forward to get. And Bob will explore what our options are and we will move forward to get the best possible ordinance. I think that's everybody's. Goal. And our next item on the agenda is City Manager.